We'll call this meeting to order and start with the pledge. Okay, we have the consent agenda, which is the council minutes from January 21st, the library board minutes, telecom commission minutes, tree commission minutes, utility commission minutes, and then the exempt gambling permits for Bark, which has an event on March 18th, and ducks unlimited expedited permit, which that event is on March 7th.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I just want to know, we should include regular bills?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's also include the regular bills. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
If a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Department heads? No department heads. Onto public comment, we have Darcy Jones from the Wyndham Area Chamber of Commerce and Amy Leopold. Come on up.
Okay, so, um...
We just wanted to come in and kind of give you guys an idea of what we've been up to, what's happening in the chamber, um, just going on throughout the year. We don't really need anything in particular, just wanted to touch base, uh, make sure we're keeping our lines of communication open with everybody and, you know, if there's anything we can do or, um, any way we can work together on stuff, you know, we just want to make that known. So, um, right now, we are, um, getting the final plans into place for, um, the Farm and Home Show, that's coming together nicely. Um, I don't think we have too much left to get that going. We're working with a school that's pretty much set in place. Um, we are ramping up to, um, for River Fest. Still got a ways to go on that. Um, always need volunteers for that, more help, um, to keep that going. Um, you know, pairing with some, um, different businesses throughout the community to try and get some of our events squared away, what we're gonna do. Um, been working a lot with, um, the city, the streets department, the police department, to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row on that as far as permits, um, what we need to block off, things like that. Um, that's our two biggest events that we have coming up, um, in the next, well, up till June. River Fest is gonna be June 13th, well, it'll start that Monday, the 9th, but the biggest will be the 13th through the 15th, um, which is Father's Day. So, um, what else do we?
Um, do we want to touch base on the rest of the events of the year, or just kind of, yeah? Um, then we have our hot dog night, which is our community event as well, that is scheduled for Thursday, July 17th. Um, that's kind of bringing all the businesses together, and we do hot dogs for the community. It's a free event for everybody. And then we have our, um, Night to You Night coming up in August, our Chamber Golf Outing, which is open to our members. And our Monster Mash Bash is in October as well. Um, we were perceived from this last year that went really well. Um, we had a lot of businesses that participated in it, and the streets were very well attended by everybody and the kids. Um, so we'll be doing that again this year in October. And then we have our Christmas by Candlelight, which is Thursday, December 11th this year. Um, we are gonna move that up forward about a week ahead of time versus on the third week, or the third Thursday of the month, it'll be the second Thursday of December. Um, we felt that it would be great because it kind of aligns with the nativity that goes on with the churches that following Sunday. Other than that, um, we just wanted to kind of give you guys all a follow-up of what's going on with the chamber. So like we have said, we're just kind of gearing up for our biggest event, which will be the River Fest, which we're pre-planning right now. We are really looking for volunteers, people from the community to kind of come out and help us. Um, it's a community-driven event, so we do need help. And our Farm and Home Show, like Amy said, we're about done with that, and that'll be on Saturday, March 8th. We're looking for everybody to attend, um, have a great attendance. We have about 15-plus vendors right now signed up, and we still have a month to go, so that looks very promising and great. Um, we have our entertainment, which will be the Zoo Man, um, so we hope to see everybody there. He'll be doing his two shows. And hopefully, um, we have one of our newest members, A&amp;W, they talked about coming in, doing root beer floats for the kids this year. So we'll be doing that in part with our scavenger hunt. Oh, and the gala, um, we will be doing that this year. It's gonna be a little bit earlier. That'll be on October 3rd. It is Friday. So instead of November, we have decided to move that about a month ahead. Um, there was just too much things going on with deer hunting and, um, hockey. We want a little better attendance, so we are looking at that. Um, we do have it booked, I believe. We're looking at entertainment, and that is again on Friday, October 3rd. Anything else?
Not letting think of, unless you guys have any questions.
I just want to thank you guys for what you guys do. Really do appreciate everything you guys do around Wyndham here, and it shows, because you get people out and get people together, and that's what we need to do around here. But thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Great work. Uh, next on the public comment is Ava Van Norman, but Ava is not here. Um, I spoke with Steve on this earlier, and then I did connect with Ava today, too. She had some questions on her American Flag Project, but she spoke with city staff after she made the public comment request, and she got all of her questions answered. And the text she sent me said it's all going very well and everything's great, so we look forward to seeing those American flags up on several national holidays, is what she said, but I'm glad it's going well. That will be awesome. Now we have, what's up is the resolution for the bid award for the Wyndham Ambulance Remount Project. Kristen?
All right, Kristen Porth, Wyndham Ambulance, um, here tonight to do a bid for our Unit 2-8 ambulance, which is our older, uh, four-by-four diesel chassis. Right now, that's our oldest rig in our fleet. Um, it is due for, um, a new chassis, and then we do a completely refurbished of the box, um, package. We did put bids out in the newspaper, and we had one bid from Arrow that's in Rock Rapids, Iowa, and that's in your packet. And the bid amount was, it was $269,939, and that's with, um, trading in our current chassis. They're giving us like $10,000 for that.
Did you have any, uh, recommendation on the cot option?
Um, we did ask for them to put a proposal in there for an optional, um, updating a cot. So each ambulance has their own power cot in there, and we tried to update them. I think, I don't know what the oldest one is. We're looking at probably over 10 years. We did ask them to put that bid in there. That was $28,890. We are opting not to replace the cot with this remount. Um, we tried to do it with our other, the other two rigs that are a smaller version, the van-style rigs, because they're less expensive. So we add this cot expense with that package when we redo one of those two rigs. So, at this time, we don't request, um, to include the cot option on this remount project.
Does anyone have any questions or further discussion on this? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the ambulance remount project.
I'll second. The motion may, is made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Thank you for the explanation. The resolution is approved.
Thank you, guys. We're very busy, so it's nice to keep our fleet up.
Thanks for all you do. Next, we have the resolution for approving the amendments to the fees and charges schedule, and Steve will take care of that explanation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, every year, you've seen this. We go through our fees and charges schedules, um, also with our boards and commissions. Any of the changes in the, in the fee schedule are highlighted. Uh, you'll probably see there's a few of them. Um, for the community center, uh, their board did make some changes, recommended changes to the fee schedule, which you see in the, in the, um, document that was included in the council packet. Um, for the street shop, essentially, we're just updating costs there of equipment, things like that. Uh, if we have to use them for like FEMA, or if we have to use them for other projects, we can use these as, uh, cost bases. Um, there's a couple others. One in here for the building official, um, the building department. That got changed, uh, last year. The council approved a change in that, so this is just implementing that change and, um, that license renewal for that alternate, um, renewal period. We don't have that option anymore. It's just the regular renewal period. That's why that's out. So, um, other than that, there really wasn't anything major, just some updates to some utility bills that have been, or utility charges that have been through the utility commission, and they've approved those, um, fees, so this is just updating the schedule. If anybody has a question, I'm happy to answer them.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution to approve the amendments to the fees and charges schedule?
I'll make the motion.
Second the resolution.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
You're changing, raising prices on the community center, then? Tim?
Yes, um, as we discussed at our commission meeting, um, a lot of our changes are due to the price increases that we are having to go with through various things that we provide for the events. Um, some of it, um, being, uh, the, as the charges go up, we have to increase a little bit, too, as that price goes up, too. So yes, our charges are also in there as well.
We're also still underpricing a lot of our stuff, though, right?
We, yes. As far as our wedding packages and that, we are still one of the cheapest venues here in southwest Minnesota for our events. So, um, we went up slight increase on some of that, um, nothing major. Um, I think our, our wedding package, our full gym wedding package, went from 1,500 to 2,000, and so far, from my phone calls, a lot of them are at 5,000 already, minimum. And so, uh, but we don't provide catering and some of that, which I think some of the other ones do that, but, uh, we have raised ours from 1,500 to 2,000. Good. Any other questions?
Sounds good to me. I guess I, as long as you, you're still the lowest around, well, you should keep pretty busy then, huh?
Mm-hmm. We'll talk about that Monday night.
Are there any other questions for Tim or anyone? Okay.
Thank you.
We, roll call.
Okay.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Now we have Josh Peterson here to discuss the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Renewal.
Hi, everybody. Josh Peterson, Bank Midwest Insurance. Um, appreciate you having me here tonight to talk a little bit about the 2025 insurance renewal for the City of Wyndham. And you can follow, I've got some information on the screens if you want to follow along with that. Um, if you have questions, comments, certainly feel free to throw those out there at any point. Um, just to kind of kick this off, a couple of things. What I'm gonna go through today are the kind of, uh, just a high-level synopsis of the coverages and premiums kind of compared to last year and why they are where they are. Um, that consists of policies and coverage written through both the League of Minnesota Cities, as well as, um, I'll get into, we have an equipment, uh, or machinery, sorry, boiler and machinery policy written through Travelers as well, as well as a couple of bonds that are written through other companies. But the vast majority of our coverage is written through the League of Minnesota Cities. Um, as a part of our coverage for 2024, the league did declare dividends in both the property and casualty, as well as work comp areas. Um, 8,195 under the property casualty, 13,00637 for the work comp. If you move on to the next page, just to give you kind of a breakdown, and these would be specific policies to the League of Minnesota Cities, you can see that I've got 24 listed as well as 2025. This did renew 1-1 of 2025 as far as, um, our term is, is set at the 1-1 every year. Um, not actually any major increases to rates on the property side for the League of Minnesota Cities, but obviously you'll see that our premium is up. Uh, the main reason for that is our premium basis, which would be our estimated replacement cost for total property throughout the City of Wyndham. So we went from about a little over 93 million to a little over 110. Um, that's a combination of completion of the power plant, liquor store, some other projects that were out there, as well as inflation that increases that number. Um, as we go down, um, we've got mobile property, municipal liability, both are relatively flat rates. Where we did see some other increases this year is in our auto property and liability, which, um, liability and physical damage, I should say, and that's, um, generally, again, league across the board, those rates are going up due to supply of parts, et cetera, as well as loss ratios throughout the League of Minnesota Cities. Um, data breach coverage is down a bit, liquor liability is up a little bit, but that's all associated to our receipts. So when that's up, usually our receipts are up. Um, and then bond coverage is slightly up. But overall, as you can see there, we are up from last year, um, on the league side, that 255 to, excuse me, 277. The next page would be specific to, actually, that's the, you were on it there, Steve, the, um, equipment breakdown with Travelers. Um, same, there was about a 2% rate increase with Travelers on this policy, which I would say in this, in market right now, is very minimal. Same as with the League of Minnesota Cities, our, our equipment breakdown policy, and that coverage is tied to the total limit or value of our property. Um, and so, again, that's up about $17 million. Therefore, we're seeing an increase in the rate on that, too, due to the amount of property that's being covered. Um, as we kind of move down, our, our bond premiums stay, have stayed the same, but overall, you can see our, our difference. This would be everything outside of workers' comp. I'm going pretty quick. Does anybody have questions, concerns? I know it's exciting, exciting stuff. Moving on to work comp, um, that'd be the next page, Steve. Um, and so, just so everyone's aware, I kind of noted here, but basically, work comp is, is factored. In our case, now that we're in 2025, we're looking at, um, loss history, et cetera, through '21, '22, '23. So the most recent year is thrown out. They don't factor any claims, et cetera, that, from '24. So it's the three years prior to that that determine what would be our experience mod factor, which again is kind of, you get how many claims do we have that are paid out, that are filed, et cetera. That gives us a ranking. So our experience mod, as you can see, is up from .60 to .79. That has an impact on premium. Um, ultimately, again, as you can see, we see that fluctuate. We're still historically down compared to where we've been over the years. But, um, but nonetheless, that kind of breaks down, and of course payroll's up, too, sorry. So payroll and that experience mod factor are gonna be some of the, the bigger factors in determining that premium. Um, so our 25 premium, as you can see there, is that 135, 443. And then below that just gives you an idea of what total amounts of claims were paid out for those particular years that, that drive those factors. So... There are, um, a couple of things that would need to be voted on by the council tonight that I'll talk about. Is there any, any questions at this point about any of the prior information? As far as this last page, a couple of, I won't dwell too much on this, but there are statutory limits in place that protect cities and municipalities from lawsuits. Um, historically, the City of Wyndham has always, um, opted to not waive those statutory limits, which basically, as you can see there, means that it's, it limits, um, them to no more than $500,000 lawsuit per claimant, or one and a half million per occurrence. Um, it, again, it's an option to either, if, if you waive those statutory limits, then there's more or less subject to the limits that you have on your insurance. So it doesn't limit them from going any higher than that. Um, historically, we've voted to not waive those limits. That would be, uh, one of the voting matters this evening, is to, to make that determination. And if we want to do that, we could go one by one, or I, should we vote on that one right away, or would you guys like to? Or you go, okay. The other, um, we always provide a quote for excess liability, um, another additional $1 million in excess liability coverage on the policy. As you can see, that comes with a price tag of an additional $19,188 in premium. Um, historically, we've opted not to accept the excess liability coverage. Um, so it would be a vote on the statutory limits, on whether or not you would want the excess liability, and then finally, accepting or rejecting the, the coverage for the, sorry, never mind, just the liability and the statutory limits.
If you could take a moment and, uh, parse out the difference, uh, for accepting and rejecting of that excess liability, uh, well, how does that affect the city?
So basically, as, as of right now, um, our liability limits, as laid out, are about about 3 million in liability, um, that protects the city. That would give us an excess $1 million in liability. So, um, basically, the potential for, I mean, whether we see that there's a risk for, um, potential lawsuit, you know, above and beyond that, say, $3 million limit, does the city see any reason to have more liability coverage than what is currently in place?
Does anyone else have any other questions for Josh? So we need a motion first to not waive the statutory tort limit.
I'd make a motion to not waive the statutory tort limit.
I'll second that.
The motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we need to make a motion to reject the excess liability coverage for 2025.
I'll make a motion to reject, uh, for 2025?
I'll second. The motion is made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Um, and I...
Now we've got a resolution to accept a donation from the Friends of the Library for $50.16 for Christmas by Candlelight supplies and future activities.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the donation from liability from, for the library?
I'll second the resolution. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution to accept the donation from the Friends of the Library for $50.16. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
The resolution has been approved and accepted. Now we have a resolution to accept a donation from Wyndham Area Health to the Wyndham Police Department in the amount of $1,800 to be used for mental health training activities. And we have Katie Greener here from the, from Wyndham Area Health. And Emily Masters from Wyndham Area Health. And Scott Peterson, Wyndham Police Chief.
You're here for moral support, right, Emily? Okay.
I'm Katie Greener, the Director of the Foundation over at Wyndham Area Health. And last year, we fundraised for and started and launched live a new mental health fund to support just improved responsiveness to mental health challenges in the community. And it was a really exciting launch, and then Police Chief Scott Peterson came forward with a request on behalf of his department, and, um, we approved it unanimously from the Foundation Board, and it was kind of the perfect type of request that we're looking for to fund. Uh, do you want to say a little bit about what it's for?
Scott Peterson, Chief of Police. Uh, we are grateful to Wyndham Area Health for this donation. What it's for is to train one of our members to become a crisis intervention instructor. That person is Andrew Kennett's office, oh, an officer for us. Uh, he will be attending, uh, training in the Twin Cities, uh, mid-March, and what he'll do is train our staff in crisis intervention. Uh, Minnesota statute requires that officers get 16 hours of, uh, a variety of different subjects in regards to mental health, crisis, uh, conflict resolution and so forth, but six hours devoted solely to mental health. Our goal is to try to double that. Uh, and we have that opportunity by having somebody get trained in it. Uh, and it's better to do training live and in person rather than, uh, you know, via the internet. So, uh, we're very grateful to them in, uh, helping us, uh, make this a reality.
So the check here is for 1,800 to the Wyndham Police Department for this crisis intervention training, and also I'll make a note, too, that it will be technically paid out on a reimbursement basis after completion of the training. And also, too, if anyone knows of any projects in our community that could be a good fit for the fund, um, you can contact me or the Wyndham Area Health website. There's information there in the application form about what could be a good eligible project. So, thank you for the opportunity to present this award.
Thank you.
I would introduce the resolution authorizing to accept a donation from the Wyndham Area Health to the Wyndham Police Department.
Second that.
The resolution has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you for, both you guys, for doing this, because it's a need that we have to take care of, and it's something we desperately need around this, the world today. It is. It's really needed. But thank you, guys, for all you guys do. But thank you guys for all you guys do for us around here in Wyndham. Thank you.
Anything further for discussion? Roll call.
Benson.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you both so much. You got a photo op going on if you're watching online or on TV.
Stand in the middle.
Yeah. Thanks again, guys. Now we've got the 2024 Pay Equity Implementation Report, and Steve is going to fill us in on that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to Lisa Arnt, in our office, who compiled this information, got it done. Every three years, the city has to do a pay equity report to the state of Minnesota. Essentially, that's looking at male, female pay rates, things like that, to make sure that they're in compliance with state statutes. Lisa got the report done with help of Emily Masters, fitting that you're here tonight from the hospital. That report got sent in. The state has reviewed it, and state has approved it. We've passed the factor tests there, so I wanted to pass that along to you as well. The packet contained the actual submission to the state itself. And so if you have any questions about the pay equity report, I can do my best to answer them. Otherwise, we're just looking for a motion essentially that you've seen it, it's accepted as presented.
I'd make a motion to accept the fact that it's been approved by the state of Minnesota, the pay equity report.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Up next is the contractor. Thank you, Steve. And Emily, thank you. And Lisa, thank you Lisa for getting this all done. Up next is the contractor payment. Generation Plant Construction, Wilcon Construction, payment number 14, and Jason Sikora will fill us in on that.
Jason Sikora, Electric Utility Manager. So we have pay app 14 to Wilcon Construction. Utility Commission's seen this on the 23rd, an approved payment. This is just a reduction in the retainage that we were holding. I don't remember the state statute, but we can't retain any more than necessary with what's remaining on the project. So after going through with DGR, we determined that there's, well, at this time, there was about $100,000 worth of work remaining on the punch lists, and then getting paperwork and, and some of that stuff done. So we're a little bit further ahead than that now, but project's wrapping up pretty well. Got a few minor things in the bathroom with some tile, and we should be pretty completed, so.
Your next payment will be the final payment, then I would assume, right?
I hope so.
Is there any questions for Jason? Someone wants to make a motion to approve the contractor payment for $172,690.22?
I'll make a motion to accept the payment for Wilcon Construction, payment number 14.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Has anybody besides me been on there in what does that place?
Wait for the weather to get a little nicer. I hear about all this global warming, but apparently not today.
Well, I think we look forward to checking it out. Thank you, Jason. Next, we have personnel matters, which include Airport Manager, IT Analyst, Billing and Payroll Position, and the Park and Recreation Coordinator.
I want to recuse myself from the Airport Manager vote, so I'll step back.
Steve, do you want to fill us in on this?
Yeah. So in the memo in the packet, Brian Underwood, who is our longtime airport manager, he's been here well in excess of 20 years. He retired in September. We've done outreach to a number of the pilots and other users at the airport, looking for somebody to come in. It's not really a traditional position in that it pays a stipend, it's not a nine-to-five type of thing, but more of an on-call person that needs to be at the airport to do the variety of tasks that I kind of had highlighted in the, in the memo. Everything from mowing to ordering fuel to keeping the facility clean. I've been pinch hitting out there since September with the help of the Street Department gentlemen. So we did have interest from two parties. One was Council Member Benson. Another individual expressed some interest. I've sent them the list of duties as I have them shown in the packet, and asked for an application, and we're going on three weeks and haven't gotten an application. So at this time, I'd like to recommend moving ahead with hiring for this part-time stipend-paid position. The stipend is $1,000 a month is what this pays. I did talk with the Personnel Committee, just to give them a heads up, as a council member has applied for it. State statute does permit council members to work part-time for the city, and we've had that eventuality previously. So at this point, I'm asking for your consideration of hiring Mr. Benson for Airport Manager, so I can get that off my plate, and we can get somebody lined up before the grass does start to grow come spring.
I would make a recommendation to hire Scott Benson for the Airport Manager.
I'll second.
The motion has been made and seconded to hire Scott Benson as the Airport Manager. Is there any further discussion?
Has this been budgeted for?
Yeah, we have a budget for the Airport Manager's position. It hasn't changed since, for a couple of years, so.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And thank you to Steve and the Street Department for filling in well before we have a new hire. Donna Torkelson for discussion on the IT Analyst, Billing and Payroll Position.
Donna Torkelson, Finance Director. We received a resignation from our Billing and Payroll IT Analyst, Leslie Hayfley, on January 21st. Steve and I looked back at the previous candidates, and we did have one person that really stood out in, in those interviews, and after reaching out to that candidate, they did express continued interest in the position. So we did have another meeting with that candidate, and so at this time, we recommend hiring Taylor Lehman for the IT Analyst, Billing and Payroll Position effective February He would be starting on step eight or 2873 per hour with a six-month probationary period. There would be no step increase after the six-month period, just because we started him at a higher step, so, and that was agreed upon with him. Starting vacation accrual would start as a one-year employee. What's that? It's a two-year?
Year two, starting year two.
Oh. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we start, start as, start the accruals at a year two in our scale. Year one, you start accruing at 40 hours for the year. Year two, you start accruing at an 80-hour per year rate. And I believe we had agreed to year two.
Two years, right. And I meant, yes, after, after, he would start as he had already completed the year, so, yes, that, that's correct. I should have worded that differently. Taylor has a bachelor's degree in business administration and has been working for Staples Oil. He has experience in both billing and payroll.
I would make a motion to hire Taylor Lehman as the IT Analyst, Billing and Payroll Position.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next for Personnel is the Park and Rec Coordinator.
Okay, I don't see Tim Hogan here, so I can pinch hit for him a little bit on this one. So last fall, Dean Smithstead, who's been our Arena Coordinator, Dean's been at the arena for over 40 years. Dean retired last fall. And so, like, first off, thank Dean for all his service to the city of Wyndham and to the citizens. That's a lot of time to put in serving the public, and he's done a wonderful job down there, so thank you for that. Because the position had been filled for such a long time, we wanted to take a look at the job description and update that. So we did that, kind of looked at it a little bit as far as the scope of it. It was pretty much focused just on the arena. And that rec position that Tim has also serves for the pool and for some of the ball field work. And so what we want to do is kind of expand Dean's Arena Coordinator position into a Parks and Rec Coordinator position. So it just expanded the scope a little bit. The duties pretty much remain the same, there's a little bit of tweaking on that. We did run it by the IBW folks just to get their input on that, and they were good with that, because we're leaving the pay range the same as it was before, but we just wanted to have the duties kind of refreshed. And so we did that. The position was internally posted. Chad Alm, who is a part-time employee down at the arena, Chad's been with us for eight years. He expressed interest in the full-time position, which Mr. Hogan was very happy about, as we don't have to take anybody and train them up, they're ready to go from day one. The downside of that is now his part-time position is vacant, so we will have to be advertising that. But I think Chad will be a wonderful addition. Tim has requested that Mr. Alm start at step 10, due to his eight years of experience at the city of Wyndham. And so there would be a bump then at, to step 11 upon the end of the probationary period as typically is done. So that is Tim's request to hire Mr. Alm at step 10.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this referral, this recommendation from Park and Rec about Chad Alm.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the hiring of Chad Alm for the full-time Park and Rec Coordinator position. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And yes, thank you to Dean for 40 years, that's a long time, and he did a good job, and now we look forward to having Chad. Do we need to do any sort of motion about being able to advertise for part-time? That was in...
Yeah, we have a budgeted position, unless I hear from you that you're not interested in that, I guess we would do that, because we're typically, you know, a little bit short-staffed there, that's why we had that part-time position, so if you're okay with that.
I thought since we were here, I'd check. Next, new business? Does anyone have new business? Does anyone have any old business? Nothing. How about council comments?
Okay. For the volunteering, for helping the chamber out, they do a wonderful job, and just help, help your city out. I mean, that's part of what we do around here in Wyndham, we help each other out. And if you want to be part of the, the stuff that we get done around here, volunteering is a great way to get done. You can get in there and find out what's going on, how it goes on. And that goes out to the Spanish Connection people around here in Wyndham too. They can join in and bring people into this, because we're all one big happy family here in Wyndham. That's how I feel, anyway. And secondly, that the cold and flu season is hitting everywhere very hard. So just try to be careful where you're going, who you're talking to, or what you're doing. Wash your hands, there's little steps you can take to protect yourself and everybody else around you. So just try to take care of everybody else, and check on your neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. Jenny, do you have anything?
I just, I attended last weekend the Hockey Association, and I think the school teamed up and brought in college, two college hockey teams come and play hockey at our arena here in Wyndham. And I think it was a great time, there was a lot of people there. So I think it's just a great thing to bring in, you know, outside things to come and have us local people be able to see a college-level hockey team, and also, you know, our young people here in the community to experience that as well, and just bring those people to town and show off Wyndham. So I thank them for bringing that to the arena.
Jim, do you got anything for us?
Just thinking of the hospital with their donation to the Police Department, I think that's something that's really useful to them, and possibly even useful to some others other than just them, but thanks again.
Jason, do you have anything?
For tonight, I just wish everyone a great weekend coming up.
Dennis?
I have nothing.
You must have something.
No, not tonight.
All right. I would just like to say, kind of echo on everybody, thanks to everybody for all the donations and everything and all the work everyone does. You learn real quick when you're somebody like me, who just comes into this, what everyone's doing, and it's really neat to see. I've been trying to go to every meeting possible, I think I've missed a couple because they overlapped. But it's just really neat, there's a lot of cool things happening here. And saying that too, if any of you, I've just kind of figured out how I do plan to use social media, I really would just like to share cool things happening in town, or things that the city is doing, or like Tim at the Community Center, feel free to send me your events, and I'll post those too. Yeah, I just think there's just a lot of fun stuff happening, it's really, thank you all for all you do. And I go to Mankato for the training through the League of Minnesota Cities on Friday and Saturday. I just wrapped up the online learning, which I'm just doing the best I can, getting all the stuff learned. So that training should be fun, I really look forward to meeting other people and learning even more. No one has anything else? Steve, I'm sorry. Steve, do you have anything?
Thank you, nothing for this evening.
If that's all, then we will adjourn this meeting at 7:18, 19. Thank you for that reminder. Appreciate it.